Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, Meeting of the Litchfield Planning Board. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll start with the roll call of members. Michael Crowder, Chair.
Joe Conal, Vice Chair. Travis Tucker, Member.
Steve Gannon, Selectmen's Rep.
Russell Blanchett, Member.
Ethan Riley, Member.
Jesse No, Alternate.
Welcome, everybody. And with us this evening is Jay Minkara from NRPC, our Circuit Writer. Welcome. Joan McKibben, our Planning Board Assistant, and Lou Karen, our Town Engineer. Appointment of Alternates. Is Jeremy coming tonight? Does anyone know?
He'll be late.
He will be late. Okay. So, given that he's not here right now, I'm just going to ask Jess, would you be interested in being an alternate vote if we needed it?
Yes.
Okay. Until Jeremy shows up, I guess. And then if he shows up, then I guess we'll defer to him. So, all right. Public input on non-agenda items, items not on the agenda for this evening. Any people have any public input on non-agenda items this evening? Anyone from the public? Okay. Seeing none, I will close public input on non-agenda items. We will go to the first on the agenda this evening. Thoreau Development LLC, map 22, Lot 11, 522 Charles Bancroft Highway, conceptual discussion to modify a previously approved site plan for a gas station and storage units. This approved on March 7th, 2023, and was recorded in the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds Plan Number 41861. Is the applicant present this evening?
You bet. We're back, Mr. Chairman.
Maybe the applicant can introduce himself to the board.
You bet. For the record, my name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a professional civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, doing business in 3 Congress Street in Ashen, New Hampshire. With me this evening is Dave Clark. Dave is the Project Manager with Marquee Construction. I'd like to also introduce Floyd Hayes. Floyd is with us as a developer of this fine facility. And of course, you all know Renee as the property owner. And as just read into the record, we're here for a conceptual discussion to talk about some changes to a previously approved plan. Of course, I look around at the board, and everybody's different. Poor Renee's been at this job for eight years, and now all of a sudden, we got a new board. I'm like, oh, wow. So, anyway, we're thankful Joan and Lou and Jay are still here, and Michael and Jared, actually, too. So, but I'll be quite brief this evening. I just want to kind of point out where we're at, talk a little bit about the changes, and then how we move forward. The Arancow team is anxious to get started, the very long-awaited New Hampshire DOT approval for not only the driveway permit, but the actual roadway construction. If you remember, there was a number of off-site improvements associated with creating a left-turn pocket into the development, as well as some much-needed sidewalk improvements out there. So, plans are done, and Renee tells me we're about a week away. Renee?
We're going for temporary permit construction. I'm told a week, two weeks away.
Great. Thank you. So, Jay, first slide, if you don't mind. I'm just going to give a quick kind of overview for some of the...
Display or the concept?
The display plan, yeah, the colored plan. Thanks. Okay. Just a quick overview for some of the board members who may not be familiar with this. We're at 522 Charles Bancroft Highway in the north end of town in the Northern Commercial District. It's a 15.3-acre site that's been in Renee's family for a number of years. What was approved in 2023 was somewhat of a mixed-use development. We've got a gas C-store, convenience store located in the front with a drive-through capability for a coffee-type tenant inside the building. We've got fueling positions for not only automobiles in the front of the store, but also a unique element here is a, right, fueling station for trucks. In the back part of the property, we've got permitted a self-storage facility, all with a single curb cut, all with underground utilities, all with a wonderful stormwater design that's been approved by not only the state, but Lou as well. So, you know, the project was really ready to go. Arancow knocked it on the door to Renee and said they'd be interested in developing this property. And Arancow, Floyd's company, is quite experienced at this. They've got over 50 type facilities in the state of New Hampshire and in the Northeast that they currently own and operate. So, they're very well-seasoned operators of facilities like this. As they looked at the plan, they wanted to make a couple of minor changes that I'm going to present to you tonight, in the hopes that you'll say, yeah, they look good, let's move to the next step. And Jay, if you don't mind, go onto the next slide. And, okay. So, Dave prepared this nice overlay, and what you're seeing, thanks, Jay, what you're seeing in kind of the dark or the black color is the currently approved plan. And then what Dave has done is superimposed in red the proposed revisions. And so, I'd like to just talk a little bit about those. First and foremost, the building went from 5,500 to 4,840, about 660 square, less square feet. And simply because, as one in this business, Arancow really knows their building. As you know, there's going to be a convenience store inside, there's going to be coffee inside, all within an open kind of concept as you walk in, which I know you're familiar with facilities such as this. So, we've got a smaller building. The canopy positions in the front, inch forward, about eight feet. The building comes forward about 16 feet. We've got parking, minor changes. We are not getting any closer to the Charles Bancroft Highway. You'll see our red line on the sheet right matches the red line that was previously approved. So, we're no closer to our active development. And the reason for the shifting is really this. Arancow will combine the underground fueling for both the automobile fueling positions and the truck fueling positions, all in one location down in the south part of the sheet, okay? And before, they were in the upper right-hand corner. And being in the upper right-hand corner, we needed to get a fueling truck off of the Charles Bancroft, in through the site, and around the back. And those turning radiuses to get around the back created a wider paved area behind the building. You'll notice the distance in the black between pavement in the back building is much greater than it is in red. And so, Dave's team said, look, we don't need all this pavement. We still have our parking, we still have the same number of parking spaces, but we can reduce that truck movement. Now, what does that do for us? It pulls everything away. If you recall, the plan, we have a wetland and a wetland buffer that we were permitted to impact the buffer, that we can actually pull grading away and actually reduce portions of that retaining wall in the back. And so, we're much further away to the wetland. We've got about 19% less impervious cover, paving and roof with this new plan. And so, we may have to reposition a couple catch basins. But Lou, I don't see us changing our stormwater practices, both at the immediate corner of this facility, as well as the downstream condition. So, less building, less paving, the drive-through's been slightly modified, slight shift to parking, a little bit of building shifts. Now, what's not going to change, Mr. Chair? We still have a dumpster set up in the north part of the site. The truck fueling in the south end of the site will remain as is. All the utilities will be underground, as will the tanking, the underground storage tanks. Parking count is the same. And most importantly, the building elevations. If you remember, Mr. Chairman, we went through colors, we went through exterior materials, we went through roof lines, and Arancow liked the work that Renee did. So, architectural elevations and renderings will remain the same. So, to me, these are, you know, the overall integrity of the previously approved plan, in my opinion, has been maintained. We've got some slight downsizing of impervious area, which should be seen as a positive. And I think what we're ready and prepared to do, in speaking with Joan quickly before the meeting, is to come back before you, Mr. Chair, with an amended site plan that looks to represent the changes, the engineering of the changes. We'll have grading, we'll have the amended stormwater and any utility connections, Lou, and other changes to the set as a result of these changes. But we'll likely be submitting an application for an amended site plan. And I'd like to talk to you about that, because I don't think it warrants any new traffic study or any new, any new type permitting that might be required with regard to that. I've spoken enough with that. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions for the applicant on this conceptual? I think, as I recall from the original plan, were you going to have, did you take out the car wash? Was there supposed to be a car wash, is my understanding, or?
Early on, there was.
Early on, there was. Okay. So, that's not going to be part of it?
The plan that was approved did not include a car wash. Yep.
And I remember, obviously, this abuts conservation property, and I think there was going to be some sort of an access to that property. Is that still on?
Yeah. If you look at the top of the plan, no, the other side, Jay. Yeah.
And actually, I didn't amend this when I was putting this together, but you can see we have a concrete pad right here. My intent is to shift this so this sidewalk lines up with this curb cut. So, I'll take this concrete pad and slide it over, but it will still connect to this path that leads over to the conservation area. And if there's anything else specific in that area that you're looking for, we'd be more than happy to accommodate that.
You mentioned you're moving the tank fill. Where is it going to be? I see here it was...
So, originally, it was in this corner. So, this is the retail gas canopy, and it will have one or two diesel pumps, I believe, up in here. But what we did is, the tanks were originally going to be right here, just for the diesel. However, just from our experience, when you have the tank field in the traffic line of these large dump trucks, it tends to beat up the covers. It's just not safe and economically practical to do that. So, we actually moved them right to here, this area, and we combined the tanks. Instead of, you know, having two over here and having two or three down here, we now have just three down here that are slightly larger.
And it'll also keep the filler truck from having to go up and around the gas station.
Correct. Right. So, I mean, you know, that turn-in radius, it might work, I mean, you know, as long as nobody's in the drive-through type of thing, but we wanted to keep that out of there, and just safety-wise, to keep them out of the retail, you know, a lot of foot traffic on it. That, and it's just more economical to have one, what we call a tank farm, down in this area, because you have to do shoring to keep the hole from collapsing, especially for the famous amounts of sand you have in this area. So, yeah, that's, a tank farm would be down in this area, and it would just have underground piping leading up to the retail canopy.
And the storage units are going to remain?
Yep. Nothing's changed there.
Nothing's changed on that. My understanding from the last time was that you were going to have, what is it, like gate access to the storage units or something electronic?
Correct.
Okay.
I should mention that we're anxious to move forward from a timeline perspective. We're hoping to have a plan until June, which hopefully would land us here in July, just to give you a sense of how we're moving.
Are the hours of operation going to change at all, or is that the same? I know that, I think, my understanding from the last, the original plan, it was going to be like, I think it closed at 10:00 or something? Is that five to 10:00?
Five to 10:00. It'll not be 24 hours.
Okay.
Five to 10:00. That's it.
Any changes to the signage scheme or to that, you know, changes as a result of branding to the appearance of the site?
Same.
Same. Jay, do you have any questions? Lou, any comments?
Just to confirm, the stormwater management area, just on the edge of the plan, won't be changed?
Not, no. And even that wall protection that we need, Lou, you know, not all of that wall is going to need to be eliminated, just a portion of it, so with the stormwater, yeah. And we have our alteration of terrain permit. We'll probably submit just a package up there to amend that, but we're just trying to keep it as simple and straightforward as we can.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Okay. Well, I guess we will probably be seeing you sometime in June, and...
I can't wait.
Well, I can't wait either. It's always...
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You, too. Take care. Have a good evening. Good night.
I think we do a lot of it. I'll probably put it in the sheet, I guess, just because it'll probably be some shifting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on. Next item on the agenda this evening is Continued Work Session. Design Guidelines for the Northern Commercial Mixed-Use Village District. Area in the Northern Commercial District was created at town meeting on March 11th, 2025. Also to review Section 120.2 of the Off-Street Parking and Loading. And I'll turn it over to Jay Minkara.
All right. I actually do have some paper copies for anybody who would like to pass these things.
She's going to keep that. Yeah.
I didn't do parking, because I figured the only change that really we made last time was on the gathering space concept. So, I thought it would just make sense to wait and see what happens at the legislature, because we're, we know that we have bills that are going to impact parking. So, however that lands, we could pick it up again. We should know, really, within the next few weeks. So, this, I kind of struggled with, just kind of some of my takeaways from the last meeting. We had the plan that was presented, and I don't know if we've got the visual on here, but, you know, basically, the concept was there was a loop road. We know we have Albuquerque and 3A, we have the loop road, and then off of the loop road, we did have some buildings fronting on it, and then we also had, you know, these smaller streets, ways, whatever there were. One of the real struggles was, it seemed that, you know, obviously, the plan that was presented had those carport or garage structures, I'll call them carports, because they're really open on one side, and all of those were located across a street from the units. And so, that was something that, as these were written, was not allowed. Seemed as though, and I could be wrong, that there was openness to considering those, it was concern about screening them. I think one of the things that we found was that they would fall under our existing design guidelines, because those do apply to any structure that's 50 feet or more, and they're 70 feet. So, our design guidelines would come into play in terms of at least the appearance of them. And either they meet those guidelines, or there's a waiver that would have to be requested. I assume that a part of the conversation around the waiver would be mitigating the visual impact. So, we did kind of mention, gee, would you be open to putting in windows? And I think that that was a no. So, I kind of struggled how to amend the language in a way that would allow more flexibility in the area. And I find my, as I was struggling, I found that we have a, we have some definitions that are helpful in our site plan regs, if I can find them. Bear with me for a moment. So, in our site plan regulations, under Section 115.2.129, we define the term "street", and we define it as follows. A major street, one that is used primarily for through-traffic, local or regional; a secondary street, one connecting residential and other service streets to through-traffic facilities; and a minor street, one that is used exclusively for access to budding properties. So, in the way I conceptualized it, in this context, major streets would be Albuquerque and 3A. That loop road would be a secondary street. It serves to provide access to the residential streets and are called "service streets". And then finally, the minor street, which is used exclusively to access a budding property. So, I would characterize those smaller roads that are really just providing access to the units as a minor street. So, that's what informed what I tried to do here. So, now I'll go through it. Let me see if I can blow this up. If it's easier for anybody out there to see. So, the first change that I made in here is on page one. And just by the way, hopefully, I was consistent. The changes that we made to this draft, from the first draft to the second, are shown in red. The changes that I made to this draft from last time are shown in, just so we can kind of see what we've done. So, initially, under this subsection 5, the language was carports, you know, garages, carports, parking lots, et cetera, should not be the dominant aspect of the site design. From any public or private streets, as seen from any public or private streets, I changed it to major or secondary streets, kind of along that same scheme. And then, moving on to the second page, this is a different change, and I'm happy to put it back in, but the language was that buildings should be setback no more than 50 feet from any public right-of-way, so that's right at the setback line, or 20 feet from any internal private street that provides it with access. I just kind of got the sense that people were really unsure about that. Is that really what we want? Do we want to be, basically, you have to be on this line? So, I took it out for now. We can always put it back or some other version. I thought about putting in a range, but I'm not sure that's valuable. Having a consistent line is usually what you're looking for, you know? I mean, again, I could put something back or something, you know, but at this point, I took it out. The next section, again, very, very similar thinking. The language is, "For garden-style multifamily buildings, not more than a single row of parking may be located between the front facade of the building," and once again, "and any major or secondary street," before it was just the street. And then it went on to say, "Additional parking lots, garages, or carports must be located to the side or rear of a building." Once again, I put, "or adjacent to a minor street." And that probably makes it, and again, the overriding theme here is, is the visual impact that we care the most for is the major streets. Of course, again, that's my thinking, at least. Once again, we had this issue of where do, you know, where a building fronts. So, it says, "Front-facing attached garages and driveways for single-family homes, duplexes, and townhouses are permitted." And I took out all other, and now it will read, "However, detached garages, carports, or parking lots may not front on any major or secondary street." This next one, seven, I dropped it from 40% to 25, and that was really because, from a visual glance, we looked at the Corning Farm example. It looked like it was 25 to 30 in that range. That's probably sufficient to keep it from being a wall, looking like a parking lot, because at least it's broken up. But I think we also want it to be realistic, and that's kind of what I was struggling with. What's the typical width of a townhouse unit with a garage? There's only so much room. So, I dropped it to 25%.
Yeah. It's the only other alternative there is to differentiate when there is and when there is not a garage in the building.
Yes. That's right. And that's an option, too. And then, for here, the subsection 4, "A building should have a primary entrance facing the public or private street that provides it with access." I struck that entirely, because I'm not sure it's really necessary, and we kind of really struggled with how to make that work. In the example of, it might actually be nicer to have the front facing Albuquerque, even though it's not the street giving it access. So, I kind of thought, I think we could be flexible around that. I see no reason not to be. And I think that's it. Yeah, that's it. Otherwise, the other changes are the changes that you saw previously. Still like to get some nicer pictures in here for a couple of examples, and I would, and I'm still toying with it, I'm happy to do it, if we think we wanted the negative examples. There's a couple I thought actually would be valuable, but kind of again, do we want to have the "don't do this" in addition to the "do this"? And I'm certainly open to including that. I did have an image of a group of townhouses that has no green space, so it really has that parking look, and it really underscores the why you want to break that up. But again, I think that's really up to us. So, that's what I've got. Okay. Well, thank you, Jay. That's great. Does anybody have any questions?
Jay, just math, math, real quick, on the front-facing area attached to garages, sorry, the, the minimum of 40 to 25 change there?
Yes.
What kind of math you looking at for width of a townhouse? What, 20 to 30 feet max?
So, yeah, basically, we looked at Corning Farm.
What side of my plot?
So, oh, I'm sorry. So, let me see if I can look it up, and if I can get it into GIS, maybe I can find it. Let's see. Oh, no, I can't.
Let's just take 20 feet, which is on the small side. 25 is only five feet of width of green space, which is a walkway.
See if I can do Google Maps.
I assume mostly more around 24 feet, but...
Yeah. I mean, a lot of them are, you know, they can be pretty narrow. If you've got a garage, it's probably 22.
Right.
Um, zoom it. Where's my zoom? I should have brought up...
So, I seem to find is, some places that are upcap really well, you have nice green strips of grass. And you have the really dirty places that are just not well, it's like little strips of garbage between yours, and it looks really unattractive. Get a little more width, people know we try to care of that a little better. It's more of a, I have some lawn now, I'm going to maintain this lawn now, and it looks nicer for a longer period of time.
Right. And typically, these developments, these are going to be condominiums, or they're going to be apartments, so...
Yeah. If they're rentals, then not much of a difference, so...
And even if they're rentals, they're going to have common management.
Right.
So, you're going to want to go to the bottom left and change the layer?
Ah, da-da-da-da.
Bottom left. All right.
No, actually, I didn't want that.
Yeah, it's on the left side, where it says layers.
Huh. Need to blow out a little bit.
It's one up. A little more north.
There we go. All right. So, it looks really dry right in this image, but it kind of gives you a sense, if these were green, that's what we'd be looking at. One driveway, you've kind of got a double area of landscaping.
Double pave.
Double driveway.
Yep.
Same thing. And then, of course, you do have the landscaping in between the units, so kind of...
Yeah. This is at least nice with having the double combined ones, you have more grass and bigger chunks, at least.
Right. So, it's kind of one way of doing it, but as you could see, just in this example, if we went to 40%, this type of a schemes clearly wouldn't work.
Yeah, definitely, no. No, that's fine, okay.
Yeah, I think we may want to differentiate if there is garage access or not, because we don't, like, 25%, when it's just walkways, it's going to be a...
When they don't combine driveways... When they don't combine driveways side by side like this, so...
Right. I bring up Callowor Corp., but as I recall, they've got a row of parking in front of the units, so it's, you don't really have that.
Yep.
Effect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are major and secondary streets defined somewhere?
They are in the site plan regs. So, a major street is one that's used primarily for through-traffic, local, or regional. A secondary street is one connecting residential and other service streets to through-traffic facilities. And a minor street is one that's used exclusively for access to budding properties.
Most of the roads or driveways on these projects will be privately owned?
Yes.
You only got two typical sections in town for public road, arterial and local.
Uh, yeah. Although, I suppose they could be, but I think in, almost certainly, they would be.
Pine Crest and Hill Crest could be considered collector roads.
Yeah.
Traditionally.
Yes.
Traditional definitions.
Yeah, this doesn't go through, you know, arterial, minor, it's a different classification. But it's the one we got in the site plan regs, so we might as well go with it.
What would make underground utilities not feasible?
I don't know.
Ledge.
No, 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 that's a, that's a cost issue. In Calloworico, they put underground utilities right through a ledge area, as long as, long as the road, and drainage and everything else. Ledge is in the way they get rid of it. The only thing I can think of would be a wetland area, that you don't wanna go digging.
Or for some reason, EverSource saying no, but we could, I mean, we could make it mandatory, if that's what we want, we could take out that qualifier.
Pretty much location, I don't think it'd be an issue for underground, who this is going, so...
Yeah, and if EverSource does say no, they would just come back for a waiver, right?
This is true.
EverSource is pretty flexible, so I, I have a secondary job there, so...
I'll take out the where feasible.
Yeah.
Now, what conditions would make them say no?
Conditions, uh, lack of access, if they wouldn't be able to get things. But with all the roads we're gonna put in, there's gonna be plenty of access for the trucks, so...
Yeah, that's not a problem in Ledgefield.
No, no.
And actually, if it's not required by the board, they'll say no.
Pretty much.
Yeah. We have a project in another town. Where it's the, it's a general requirement, but it's not on the plan, and they refuse. So, the applicant has to come back to the planning board and get the subdivision amended with a note that says, utilities shall be integrated.
Yeah. Yeah, based on this land and where it's located and what the design's gonna be, I don't see why they'd wanna go over on it, it'd be such a eyesore.
It would be an eyesore.
It'd be a serious eyesore.
It would just be a constant...
Yeah, if you driven down to Salem and all and seen where the racetrack was, it looks great, minus the massive power lines running right in between the main road and the Tuscan Village, so...
How'd it goes?
I just had a question about, um, the plan from, I think, like, the fifteenth. So, I think, if I'm reading this correctly, this would basically permit, like, what they drew up with the garages opposite. I don't, I can like cast it around, but...
Yes.
So, these garages would be allowed, but like, not one here, not one here?
That's right.
Okay.
You couldn't put them on...
Yeah, a little circle.
That loop road.
Okay, perfect.
I did send them, they wanted, um, comments from the public in the internal technical review committee met on that project, the basic concept. And, uh, there was some discussion whether there were, they were driveways coming out onto Albuquerque or streets, but Jay's clarifying is they would be private streets coming out. I put a comment in that, if I lived in, uh, one of the units, to get to the commercial area, you'd have to come out on Albuquerque and then make another left-hand turn. So, I said, why not? And somebody at the TRC meeting did say, connect the commercial to the residential with that road, and so then you have one less curb cut onto Albuquerque. Because, you know, if you were living there, why go out, make a left turn, make another left turn to get into the commercial?
Yeah, minimizing left turns is a good traffic idea.
But if you're not living there, though, and somebody ends, I mean...
It'll increase traffic through the residential area.
I was gonna say, yeah, I'm not sure I'd want that.
You'd have to, well, it wouldn't be that far into the development, though.
You could always add trees and make it more curvy, too. It would decrease people wanting to go that way, then.
And there's a, there was a entrance on three A also.
But he also did say that there'd be a, a walkway, concrete walkway.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if it's, if you're going shopping, you're gonna carry all your stuff back, or...
Yeah.
We wanna walkable community.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you wanna walkable community, walk.
Well, if it was a, a supermarket, you wouldn't, you'd be pulling your little cart.
Now, the good thing about a walkable supermarket is you can do more...
Right.
Small trips.
More small travel.
This is true.
Go every other day, get a couple things, and walk back.
What do I want for dinner tonight? Let's go for a meal.
That would be really nice.
Yeah, I don't think we should be increasing traffic into the community. That's just asking for trouble.
Yeah, into the housing area, as well.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
If we can avoid it, let's try to avoid it.
Then you have all those, you have two curb cuts right near the Albuquerque intersection.
Yeah, that's not ideal.
Moving down by Morgan Lane.
And like theoretically, they could just have one curb cut and then split it. For the whole traffic circle.
Is it possible for them to add like a one-way, just for like, from the residence to the commercial lane, and then not like the other way? I don't know, like, kind of where they were talking about putting that path, the walking path?
I thought he was mentioning it up around here. He, he just kinda likes every, yeah.
By the way, we could probably...
Well, it's, it's still a basic, basic plan, they want, they won't comment back, so feel free.
See, also, this won't be there, so most likely, it'll be another unit. This meeting, this is gonna be across the street.
Did you have something driven?
So, in the last meeting, we discussed, um, parking, and we decided not to require windows for practicality reasons and, and security reasons. Uh, but we discussed the possibility of landscaping requirements. Do we, uh, want to require, or is there any language in here for screening, uh, parking structures from the, um, everything but the most minor of roads?
There isn't, although we could add that.
Yeah, I think...
They still would have to meet our design guidelines.
Right.
Because the building is seventy feet.
Yep.
So, under our design guidelines, they have to have windows, doorways, they have to have differentiated roofline, portico, they have to have all of that. So, in order to do that building, they would need to seek a waiver.
So, for the existing parking structures?
Right, from our existing, so I'll...
Unless they shrunk them down to forty-nine feet in length.
Let me just go to our existing design guidelines.
Which would probably look better.
It would look better, but it would still be an eyesore, having one giant ten-foot-tall white building. It'd be a little bit, oh, it's hideous.
It's more of a...
You know?
A cupola on it.
Well, it's not required currently, so it's a problem, so...
Right.
But cupolas would look great on it, you know, adding depth in the siding color or texture would look great on it, you know, things like that, but we don't...
And a few trees.
And some greenery would be fantastic.
So, Jay, since our last meeting, though, um, I've thought about the no-window thing, 'cause I was one of the people who was like, you can't ask for windows on a garage.
Right.
But the more I thought about it, the more I thought, you can, if they're positioned high, and they're those narrow ones up top. So, I don't know how you get to that level of...
Well, transom window, yeah.
Detail and requirement, but...
Carriage house.
There might be a way, I'm sorry?
It's called a transom window?
Okay, so there might be a way where you can...
Would be a public action.
Push them in that direction?
And also require frosted windows, potentially?
Yeah. A, a, and I, I think that there's probably two things.
They're high enough, you're not gonna see in them, but that, but it achieves that look that you want.
Right.
You know?
Because in a building that, yeah, any facade that is fifty feet or more in length, all of these design guidelines are gonna fall in, and there's lots of them. We have granted waivers in the past. I think that's where you're gonna go, unless we wanna exempt residential garages, which is an option. It's a way the language reads now is, in cases of non-residential facades, fifty feet or more in length, and all multifamily structures, the applicant shall incorporate the following architectural features and treatments to diminish building mass. And then it goes on with this very long list of, well, A through K.
I think we could point to that.
I think we can, too.
And, and if we say no to whatever design that they come our ways, we can point back to that and say, you go back to the drawing board and, you know, follow our design guidelines, and then we'll talk.
Right, or you could say, or add, you know, provide adequate screening to the board's satisfaction, and then the board would be willing to grant the waiver on that condition.
Sure.
Yeah, like, um, I'd rather not remove the requirement and have them make a waiver with a design proposal that we, we know is not gonna cause, may be an eyesore, rather than just not allow, not require it at all, and then have them just do whatever's cheapest.
Right.
Yeah. I think, I think that's, I think that's right. 'Cause it really will be realistically, given the terrain, it's flat and it's open. They're gonna be visible.
Yeah. The main concern is, if we end up with those internal green spaces, you're probably gonna be in the green space, and you're just gonna be surrounded by garage structures. Like, all, it could be all directions, depending on...
It could make for an awesome field. Backstops everywhere.
So, like, I wonder if we should require at least some trees around those. I think, like, wording like, um, the garage structure should not be the dominant, um, uh, view or dominant structure, visual structure, from any ma, or to, like, major road.
How about something along the lines of natural buffering to provide, you know, a more aesthetic look?
Right. Stick some language in it, buffering. The way it reads now is garages, carports, parking lots, and or driveways should not be the dominant aspect of site design as seen from any major or secondary streets.
Okay, so, they might, with the existing wording, then we can say, oh, we think it's dominant, please at least provide some trees or...
Yeah, if I saw, they would mount it.
Yeah.
Might we wanna add anything to the, like, landscaping requirement section about, like, trees and green space, and if kind of garages are part of those common areas? Or do we just wanna leave it earlier?
Didn't we discuss bringing in more mature trees, based on where they're going?
Not less than three-inch caliber.
Something like that, we talked about.
It's on, uh...
Page five.
Yeah, page five at the top, or, or beginning of two.
Yeah. Like, suitable trees to fit the space.
Yeah.
Yeah, so... Sorry, so, I'm on page five, as I was searching for my pen, where are you?
Yeah, most developers know that you can use...
Let's see, where was it?
To help achieve a certain...
Where are those trees again?
Uh, it's on page five, number fourteen.
Yeah, so that just, number two was just really street trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, so because we don't require the screening here, um, they're going to just make their own proposal to satisfy the other requirement in the other section.
Right.
About, it can't be the dominant.
But I could stick some language in here about enhancing, um, screening, 'cause also, I'm guessing that we would want it to be a little bit more naturalized, like, probably not a straight row of, of...
Yeah, not literally only along the tree, uh, those streets where they're required.
Right. I could, I'll add something there to kinda fluff that up. Back to streets.
I guess one, um, definition thing, uh, that I wanna just get your opinion on is, are driveways defined in our regulations? And would they claim any of this is a driveway? Or any of the internal roads would be driveways?
So, you could. Um, so here's how we define driveway. The physical structure intended as a dedicated temporary or permanent means of egress and, uh, ingress and or egress to a property or place.
Didn't we determine that that small street...
Minor road?
Between where the, the buildings are and the carports are, that that is effectively a driveway?
It's just a, it's a...
It's arguable...
Yeah.
That it's a driveway.
Yeah.
But, I would say it isn't a driveway, it's a street. And the reason I would say that is because it's not a place, it's multiple. And, you know, would the fire department say that needs to be named, and you need to address it?
Right.
Uh, and my guess is yes.
So, only if it's a single building would they consider it a driveway?
I mean, that's, would be my view, is a driveway is really going to a single place. You can have a shared driveway for two, but once you've gone to three, I think you're a street. Three or more, I would say is a street.
How about the width of it, too? Because those minor roads would be fairly wide compared to a residential driveway.
Right, so, so, once you get there, then you're required to meet our street standards. Unless we grant a waiver, um, you then have to meet the street standards. Planning board can approve private or public roads, but we say, either way, you meet the standards, unless we get a waiver, which we have Olson's Mobile Home Park as an example of where we did grant a waiver, uh, from the width, to allow a narrow. So, that does happen, and that's a possibility when you say G. But you've also gotta think, you know, how narrow do you wanna be, because you're gonna need to get a fire truck in those. Potentially.
And is the main reason that a lot of these roads end up being private for like setback reasons?
You know, I, I don't really think so. I think it's mainly because they're not individual lots. So, where you're conveying individual lots, you have to be on a public street, uh, or you don't have legal frontage. And so, in this case, uh, because it's conceived of as a rental property, it's just gonna get managed all as one, there's no individual lots, so, I think that's primarily why. It's typically that way. And, we do tend to be more flexible, uh, on our street requirements, because it's private.
Yep.
So, yeah. So, interesting, you've got a lot of interesting little, little quirks here and there. And our, our definition for street in the subdivision regulations is really consistent with, um, site plan. There's just a minor little tweak in the, um, intro, but other than that, it gives the same three categories of street. Yes. So, I guess a couple little changes.
Does anybody have anything else? I think, I mean, I think it looks good, um, certainly, um, may, maybe a little tweaking, but, um, I think that, um...
So, you want me to tweak and then bring it back?
Tweak, bring it back, yeah, yeah, definitely. If we can do that, that would be perfect.
Do we, do we have any official documents submitted by, um, the, the developer yet for the relevant property?
No.
Hmm, no.
So, uh, did we come to any conclusions on whether or not we wanna differentiate the, uh, green space requirement in front, in front of buildings, uh, with or without, uh... Uh, with or without, uh, attached garages?
Guess, it what we think.
What do you, what would that provide exactly?
So currently, as proposed, we dropped the requirement from forty percent minimum green space to twenty-five percent. But there are situations where they will not have attached garages, in which case it would be more. It would be easier to add more green space in those scenarios.
I would just caution against that because some people might say if they don't have a driveway, they, if they don't have a garage, they want more driveway space. Like, I know at some properties, they have like two deeded spots or two, a two-car driveway if they don't have a garage. So then they might say, well, we don't have a garage, so we're working with just the space in front of the unit.
So then the question is just where do they put the, the parking spots?
Yeah.
Is if, if there are not attached garages, which are, most people find appealing. Because they can hide cars and stuff like that. Do we want a bunch of cars taking up up to three quarters of the frontage?
Yeah, that's a good question.
So if you were to look at the Rose Meadows example, that's what they have. They have pull-in parking in front of all, or Calhoun Court. It's pull-in parking in front of all of the units.
And then there's green space between.
Yes, there's a strip of green space broken up by, um, walkways.
Yep, so how would that apply to that?
So I'm thinking if we kind of wanted to regulate green space in between, we would probably get a row of parking on opposite side or. That's what I'm carrying.
Yeah, so, so right now, the way it was modified, let me go back, let's go back up to that requirement.
Yeah, in Calhoun Court, they have six units and there's twelve spots in front of, as you were saying, two deeded. But then he also has the garage, plus a spot in front of the garage, so he's saying each unit actually has four spots. But if you remove the garage, each unit would have two.
Right, so, and this is between. Any, this is between the street and the unit, so. That would mean in these scenarios, you can't have that pull-in parking in front of each unit. Um, so right now, you can't do that. Um, so we could either say, if you have a driveway, it's twenty-five, it's more if you don't. Um, we do allow it under these regulations for garden-style building, under the theory that they need more parking.
So ideally though, like in his conceptual, when he came here last week, right, and you've got the loop road going around where they don't have the garages.
Right.
So are you saying those people wouldn't be able to, in those buildings that are on that loop? Those folks wouldn't be able to pull in up to the building?
If they don't have a driveway, that would be true, yes.
Yeah, looking at Calhoun Court, the percent green space is very small.
Yes.
Um, so I guess twenty-five percent would probably be more than it's, that there is right now.
Definitely.
So I guess, yeah.
Right, I mean, that is a point because in here we say. That for garden-style multifamily buildings, you could have no more than a single row of parking, that subsection four, in front of the building. If we think that's okay with the townhouse units, we could say the same thing. So it's really kind of what do we want, what do we wanna see? If we do that, then that, really that minimum green space kinda goes away. Because realistically, let me see if I can find, um.
Like, like looking at it, it's possible to increase the percentage of green space by just moving the building further from the road.
That's true.
Um, that just makes it harder to fit things in.
It's gonna get walkable, we want the building closer to the road.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's no way they're gonna be very marketable if, you know.
Yeah. Like, realistically, we'd probably, to meet this requirement for twenty-five percent, they'd probably have to move the building back like five feet, maybe ten. And put some grass in.
That's five or ten extra feet of walkway too, so, I mean, it all adds up. If I'm a developer, that's what I'm thinking. And if I'm a, uh, patron of, you know, tenant of that, it's not much further I got to carry my groceries.
Ten feet.
Not gonna be happy.
That ten extra feet.
Yeah, well, you'd say that, but.
When you're old and your knees are failing.
Yeah.
These are multi-story buildings. Think if you can deal with stairs, you can deal with.
Or your mobility impaired too.
These are most, all, everything proposed here are multi-story buildings. I don't think Glitchfield has requirements for accessibility beyond what the state already requires.
The end of page.
Oh, yeah, here. So, invisible. Okay, yeah. So this is Calhoun Court and this is what Rose Meadows looks like. This is what the example that we were shown will look like. The pull-in parking in front, here are the townhouse units, here's the sidewalk. And then this is the green space, this is just a strip of landscaping here, and then here are the garage buildings. In this example, obviously, there's no type of central green space really at all. So I guess this comes down to what do you want, what do we wanna see?
Right.
Yeah, what, I guess what would the developer likely modify to, in this plan to fit the twenty-five percent requirement? If we, if we keep it as ordered?
The, I think the only thing you could, well, there, there's two options that you could do. You could reduce the number of parking spaces in front of each unit, so that you've got green space in between these. Or you could set the buildings back farther. To achieve a lar, a, you know, a fatter strip of green between the building and the sidewalk.
But if you remove the parking spaces, you're gonna have to make up for them someplace else.
You could, yeah.
You do, I mean, you, you, you can't not, right? So, do you want more paved, I mean, do, do you want more area in which you're gonna be broken up? And seeing more, more pavement? Uh, you know, I mean, it, you know.
Uh, you, we could argue that this is just moving the parking spots instead of helping anything else.
Yeah, right now, each of these units has four parking spaces.
I did some very rough math and what we're looking at is probably twelve to fifteen percent green space at most. In front of the, uh, between the road and the buildings.
But again, I mean, you could push back the building a little more and gain a fatter green strip in front of each building. And that would be a way of accomplishing it.
If they had enough property, couldn't they make the circle bigger, make some green space in the middle?
You mean here?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're talking about the green space requirement in front of the buildings.
Yeah.
So that would be one option is you could move the building back. Another option would be some of these parking spaces go to the side, so that you've got some green breaking up. That length, that's an option. So it'd be some combination there. So, I mean, this is an example without a driveway, so maybe keeping it at the twenty-five percent. You still have some flexibility as to how to do it. Again, that's whatever we wanna see.
Yeah, I think the approximate square footage between the road and the building in this situation is a little over four thousand square feet. So if we require, um, twenty-five percent green space, that's about a thousand square feet of. Green space. Which is about a thirty-one by thirty-one foot area. Which could just be breaking it up into two section and removing, removing two or three parking spots.
Okay, so this, this building here is what, this is probably about.
I can measure.
I was gonna say.
Ninety feet?
That is a hundred ten feet according to.
Ten feet across?
Yeah.
Close to a hundred and twenty. Parking spaces are nine or ten feet wide.
Yeah, alright.
Six units per.
And the parking space is probably twenty feet deep, so the building's what, maybe twenty-five feet back?
The depth according to this is measuring the roof.
What would you say?
Forty-five.
The length of the parking space is eighteen or twenty feet, you know, have eighteen feet between the end of the parking space and the building.
No, no, I'm saying from Calhoun Circle, from the street.
The distance from the s- from the street?
From the street to the building.
Building.
Eighteen and five and probably three or four.
Right.
This says forty.
Twenty-eight, forty?
Forty?
Oh wait, it's forty.
That's.
Seems too much.
Probably twenty-five, twenty-six in that range.
So how deep is the, are the parking spots, so I can get a reference?
Eighteen or twenty feet.
Yeah, that matches, so it's about two, so it's around forty feet, two, two parking lot, or parking spot depth away.
Doesn't seem like you could fit another car between the building and the front of one of these cars.
You ignore the deck or the porches.
Okay.
Yeah, it depends what you call the front of the building, you know, which, where the step start.
Yeah, I'd say the building facade, so. So if I'm right, you'd need about twelve hundred feet of green space in that scenario.
Yeah. Which if it's just along the length of the building.
That means that really it's only ten, if that's a ten-foot s- green strip.
Yeah, that, that's, that's nothing.
That's really, I mean, I would think that's pretty achievable.
Yeah.
And would soften.
It would make it easier to put grass in if that's desired or.
That's what, twenty-five percent?
That's, yeah, if you wanted to achieve the twenty-five percent in this scenario, you'd need a ten-foot strip.
So I think it's fine, I mean, I just am not seeing the value in differentiating between a higher for, if you don't have a garage versus not. Like, I think the twenty-five blanket seems fine.
Yeah, looking at, after looking at the examples, it looks like it should, it won't matter.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, if it was forty percent, that would much more drastically change this design.
Yeah, without a garage, it'd be different, very different.
So twenty-five percent is at least pushing the developer to make it not just pavement, uh, building.
Yeah, I don't think it went into his development because it was private.
Right. Alright, alright. Well, um, ne- any next steps, Jerry? I'll make some changes and bring it back. Um, you know, just thinking, timing wise. The only change I'm really looking at is, you know, um, beefing up the landscaping requirement, so. So our next meeting would be the third.
Okay.
And if we're happy with what we see then, then maybe we could do a public hearing on the seventeenth.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds like a plan. And if I had to guess, I'd guess inevitably, once we go through our first one, we'll probably see things that we'll wanna change and. Probably come back and modify those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, very good.
Well, Murphy's Law says the first project coming in will have four or five waivers.
And then we'll have to come back to the drawing board.
Yeah, our goal is to make it practical, but still beneficial.
Yeah.
Uh, next, I'm, go ahead, Jerry, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna add, I think what probably would be helpful is if I just stick in a reference back to the design guidelines. And the site plan regulations in general, that section, just so that, that time it is clear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll stick that in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next item is committee reports, any reports from any committees? Um, Jay, anything on, bye, thank you Lou, appreciate it for coming in, have a good night. Anything on economic development, uh, heard anything or?
No, we had to push it off.
Jeremy, I'm sorry.
I, I made it, sorry. Uh, no, we had to push it off because we weren't real quite ready to submit stuff yet, so, no, no change.
I think it's down to final report time, right?
Correct, that's what we're working on now, but it's supposed to be, hopefully developed this month, so for our July meeting, we should have something. Sorry, yeah. Finish in June, for our July meeting, we should have something for you guys, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Cool. Uh, anything from NRPC, Jerry?
Uh, no, we did have our annual forums.
We did, it was well-tended.
Yeah, I thought so, I thought it went well.
Very good. Um, anything from the Board of Selectmen, just again?
No, it was a quick, quiet meeting.
Okay. Um. I don't have anything to report from conservation, I think we usually, our meetings are usually the first, uh, Thursday of the month. And we just had ours a couple weeks ago, uh, for, um, for May. Um, Lower Merrimack Local River Advisory Committee did get an email from those folks. Hmm, might be having a meeting at some point for some sort of a, um, someone submitted a plan. Um, I think it's a shoreline permit, so might be looking into that, or alteration terrain, I can't remember which one it was. But, um, so, I, I know that they're looking for a new, um, chair. Fran Murphy is stepping down, so I think that, um, they'll probably have a discussion about that. So, we'll wait and see what happens. Uh, Capital Improvement Committee, uh, just met, we have a me- meeting coming up in June. And I think that covers everything. Okay. Mr. Chabado, hello.
Guys, done?
Yeah.
Well, we're getting done.
We're about to be.
Yeah, we're going through the agenda.
Be us here later?
Yeah, I mean, I was watching everything and, fine, but don't kill us on the, on the green space in our townhouses. I mean, that's what you're doing right now. You know, it's like, we're gonna face all the units. So the front of them units are gonna face Albuquerque. So that's what you're gonna see when you're driving through, to, to, you know, drive through Rose Meadow and. They have trees in front of them, they have green space in front of them, they're not, you know, it's just. People wanna park in front of the units and because of the length of the building and the width of it, we need, we can't have. If we, if, if you.
Rick, could we ask you to sit at the tables?
Yeah, just so that we can get him the microphone, just.
If, if, if you make us break up that parking lot and put, so the middle unit, there's gr- there's a green space in front of it. You know where the car's gonna park? On the green, it ain't gonna park three places down, so we need to.
We just had this conversation, you must've been in the car because you talked about. I argued that, you know, I'm old, I don't wanna be walking too far to walk to bring my groceries up, so.
Proposed language.
Calculations, quick calculations of what our twenty-five percent would, would truly mean in the way of a strip.
And it depends on the width of the unit, so you, and you gotta give each unit two, two parking spots in front of it, you gotta.
How big is your, your sixth unit at, well, the ones you're building now, or are they a hundred and twenty longs?
Yeah, they're about that, yeah.
About one-twenty, and then the garages, I think you said were seventy?
No, they're more than that, they're, uh, they're sixteen feet wide, so whatever that is.
Sixteen times six.
Oh, small, then.
Yeah, so less than one-twenty.
Less than one-twenty, he, he, didn't you say one-ten, Jay?
The, the units are sixteen?
I think it's sixteen feet wide, yeah.
Yeah, I, that, my guess was around one-ten, yeah.
Yeah, one-ten, one-twenty.
So, we reduced the number over forty percent to twenty-five percent since the last meeting. And according to our calculations, that would be around a ten-foot green space in front of the building, between the building. And the, uh, pavement.
Okay, but why don't we get any credit for all the green space behind the buildings? Why does it have to be where they're parking?
It's to make it look aesthetically pleasing.
Have you been, have you been through Rose Meadow though? Because I think Rose Meadow looks a lot better than Calhoun. Calhoun is tighter. Rose Meadow is more spread out.
They all have, they all have a lot of green space around them though, I mean.
Yeah, in the back, yeah.
I understand, but it, it's, it's what people want. I understand, but it, it's, it's what people want, so having a big green space in front of the unit just makes it tougher. Okay, and, I mean, we're not gonna have as many garages up here, you know, the next, as we do now. But I think putting the units towards facing Albuquerque, the front of it, so they come in the back door.
Yep.
I mean, I don't wanna do that in the whole project, because then it's gonna put units facing backs the wrong way. Okay, so we don't wanna do that, because then that's not gonna look so hot, so. In, in some ways, before you tie this down, let us come up with what our real conceptual plan's gonna be, because we're gonna be the first one, and I'm willing to work with everybody and talk about it, so it doesn't have to be etched in stone right now, so if we don't edge it in stone, have a guideline, but give us some room, okay, because it's like, I don't wanna, I don't wanna use vinyl siding, so I'm gonna use wood siding. I, I, that's my, my goal. Have wood siding out there so that we can make it look something different. But that, that goes at a whole lot more expense than vinyl siding. So there's things that you wanna do to make the project really nice, and I want your input, and I want everybody involved, but don't, just don't cut us off too quick. That, that's all I'm asking, just, we'll, we'll work together, we'll come up with what everybody's happy with, but just give us a little bit of wiggle room right now, because we are the first one. I'm telling you, we'll work with you, you know, we will, and we just need a little bit of room there.
Jay's only working on the last draft right now, so it's not, it's not done yet.
I know, but we're still, you know, I, I don't get with the architect until June fourth. It's gonna take, you know, we're at two or three months away, you know, and I, I heard with, and what I gave you for a plan is gonna totally change. We are gonna tie the commercial into it, we're gonna do some, we're gonna put a road in, we were probably gonna do that anyway. We're probably only gonna have one entrance on Morgan Road and just go in with one road. There's things that, we're listening to what everybody's saying, we're just still throwing it out there so we can get what everybody wants, so whether the committee.
They were arguing over driveways and streets, and Jay cleared up that they're streets, the streets can come out of Albuquerque.
Yeah, but if we can get away with one entrance off of Albuquerque and then the commercial by itself, and we tie the commercial, probably makes sense, so we're probably gonna do that. We may, right now, Jim's looking at actually tying into Morgan Road at Colby Road. We may do that. Don't know yet, we're still. We're still in very early stages and trying to make it all market. I want it to work, I want it to look really good, just like, we're gonna have the two buildings out front, we're trying to figure out a design, but I want it to look like a barn. Okay, both buildings are gonna look, I like barns, as you can tell.
Barns are just adding fake barn doors in the back of the carports instead of windows, you had to break up depth-wise. So, you know, something like that to kinda get you both, both views.
But, you know, they have a garage door in the front, they're not, they're not open, none of the, none of the buildings are open, garages are all closed, but.
Yeah.
You know, if we have to put a window in some places, okay. Let's, you know. We'll, we'll get there, we just need to all, I need to hear everybody's ideas, but we, we gotta kinda, on some of the little things, like how much landscaping we have in the front or whatever, we need a little bit of room. You know, you know what the unit's gonna, and we, we are not gonna have a garden-style unit, and, yeah, we've looked at, we've done a kind of a study, and with all the big units that are being built in Nashua and Manchester and we feel the market, the, our market's gonna be much better as townhouses. So that's what it's gonna be, they're gonna be all townhouses.
Yeah, the last thing we wanna do is make your regulations so hard that developers say, you know what? I could put in storage units and it's much quicker.
Yeah, we're not gonna do that.
Oh, I know, you're not going to, I know you're.
Yeah, we're gonna, and, and it's really the last, everything that I have right there, other than in the thirty acres that, that's for sale, that nobody's gonna see. I mean, that, by St. Francis, that, you know, that's, that's probably gonna be housing too, but you're never gonna see it. So this piece is like the last piece, and then everything from the driving range all the way up to, you know, to where the gas stations go, and is, that's what we have. And that's what I said, so this piece, we're gonna, between us, we're gonna get it right, so that, but we just need that. Give us a little room.
Do you have any numbers on what you do have in terms of green space on those units?
No, we, we're still, we're still, we're still moving target.
What about your?
June fourth.
Yeah, like what about being existing, uh, developments?
So, so, uh, you mean like at Rose Meadow?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I think we're at fifty percent green space on the whole project.
And what about right in front of the units? Because that's this bullet that we're working on.
In front of the?
Between, between the road.
It's not big.
Yeah.
It's not big, it's, it's, there's a sidewalk, there's curb, and there's a sidewalk, there's steps. You know, there's, I don't know, from the front of the building to the back of the walk might be ten feet.
Yeah, but, but that's what we're saying is that by our calculations, the twenty-five percent gives plenty of room for the developer to, you know, we feel.
But then it's gonna be where they're, where they're going in, where the parking lot is. So the ones facing Albuquerque, for instance, there's a bulkhead there too, so we even have less green space.
Seriously.
Okay, so we have to have a bulkhead, and we don't have to bulkhead on the front of the unit, in the, for the front door.
Right.
So. You know, that's gonna be at the back door, but they're gonna, we're gonna flip the unit, so when they walk in the back door, they'll be walking into the kitchen. At Callaway Court and Rose Meadow, they, when they walk in the front door, they're walking into the kitchen. We're gonna, you know, flip the unit so that the ones facing Albuquerque. So. Just, you know, it's a moving target right now to try to get everything to fit, and now we're gonna, now we're gonna do it. Okay, so. Just keep in mind that, I know that if we split up any of that parking in front of those units, they're gonna park.
Unless you curb it.
No, they'll.
That's not happening.
I'll just stop anybody.
It's the same thing with trying to.
It's not gonna stop.
Yeah.
It's the same thing with trying to reduce it to just two parking spots. You know, someone's gonna have a friend, someone's gonna have a third car, there's gonna be a need for added spots.
Oh, you can't do it, you have to have, you have to have a lu- a minimum of three parking spots per unit.
Because then that extra car will be sitting on the grass or sitting in some green space someplace.
Yeah, there's, 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 there's never enough parking, never, never enough parking.
Do you have any ideas on the requirements that we should do between, for the very front of the buildings? Because that's what we're working on, and, uh, I know you're, you're wary of the, the green space requirement.
As far as the green space?
Or an alternative to the, that requirement.
I mean, go look at, go, go look at, go look at Rose Meadow, drive in, yeah. I mean, I was gonna tell you guys to drive through, because we're starting to plant the trees, and you can see what we're doing along the road, so that you have an idea what, when we're out here, because it's the same thing, it's a field, that you can see that, that we're planting the trees, um, that we're gonna do, but look at the front of the building. Beauty's in the eye of, eye of the beholder, I think they look good the way they are, but that's something else to look at too. You know, and I know people don't like to walk far.
What's that? Yeah, I'll come up with something. It is a good idea to take a, drive down there for anybody who hasn't though, because it really is gonna be the example, I think.
Yeah, it's the example, it's, it's the example, it's what you see there, you know, except for coming up with what we're gonna use for siding. And if you go around the back of the building, just walk around the back of the building, or you can, you can actually drive and see. Well, you can see when you drive in, you'll see the back of the building, that's what people are gonna be driving up to, to go into their house on the lots facing Callaway Court. I mean, facing Albuquerque, sorry.
And what side do you have in, um, Rose Meadows?
What size, what?
What siding?
Siding.
Siding.
No, but they're identical units, same colors, everything's the same, identical.
Yeah, yeah, the main concern I have with wood is if, like, I'm sure you'd maintain it, but it, once it stops being maintained perfectly, it looks worse.
Yeah, but vinyl, vinyl can, vinyl burns out from the sun too over time, so it's not, you know, we're using, so at Callaway, we, we have a twenty-year vinyl, and at Rose Meadow, we went to a thirty-year vinyl. But the thirty is probably only gonna last twenty years, being at the brightness.
Big open field.
I don't know what the twenty is gonna be. It's like shingles on your roof, you buy thirty-year shingles, and in twenty years, you gotta change the roof. You know, just the way it is now. So, I don't know, I mean, we'll have to stay them, but, you know, the wood can, but it's gonna be own, we're gonna own it, so it's, somebody's gonna own it someday, and, and I would think that, you know, a an apartment place like that, or a townhouses like that, are gonna be maintained.
Yeah, if you guys build.
Not too many of them that don't get maintained.
If you're building a de- building a decent HOA cost and take care of it, it should, it should maintain pretty well.
Yeah, whatever it is, you know, I mean, between mowing the grass and taking care of all that stuff's gonna happen. You know, we have sprinkler systems in the whole place, so it's, you know, there's all things like that that make a big difference. If you do it, so. Anyway, that's where I am, so. We're probably in sometime in, maybe a second meeting in June, I might be able to come in with a new concept plan.
Okay.
Just to give you a, and the one I gave you was just a.
Yeah, fair.
We're gonna get started, you know, but at least it's an idea of where we're headed.
Okay.
That's where we are.
All right.
So your plan that you brought in originally got us talking about the primary roads and the secondary roads and the minor roads, and then that opens up a whole lot of conversation, because then, like, the minor roads where the garages are on the backside of the units are not so important as like what we see from Albuquerque.
Well, they, so the fire department's gonna make us name everyone.
Okay, so they're.
They're gonna make us name everyone, so, and they are at Rose Meadow, everyone has a name, because they're all different. So the only way they're gonna find a person in the emergency is to go to that road, that's what it's gonna tell them, so they're all gonna have a road name.
How, how wide are they?
Around twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four feet, so it's like a, so it's much bigger than a driveway.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, normal roads, twenty-four.
Well, they're all built, I mean, you have to build them that big just to get the rubbish truck in.
Without strip.
You know, and you have to set the rubbish, the, the container the right way, so the rubbish truck can come in, drive in, back up, and go back out. So you, you gotta have loops around, just get the rubbish truck here and there. You know, so if you don't, then, then if you don't have the rubbish close by, then they're not gonna, that's another problem. You know, with rental property, you just, all the things you gotta think about to make sure that, not everybody, but there's always. Those are things that we have to, you know, and then, like with the garages, we, we try to get the, the, we did at Rose Meadow, is we put the, the dumpsters so they're kinda hidden in the garages, and then they're not fenced in yet, but they're coming, they're gonna, they're gonna get fenced in, taking care of that way, but they're not yet, but, you know, try to keep them out of sight as much as you can. Anyway, that's where we are coming with that so far.
Good. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Good?
I think we're good. Thanks for coming down. I know. Didn't interrupt dinner or anything.
I was like, oh my god! I wasn't that, I just, just didn't wanna, I just didn't wanna have the, something done so that we have to ask for all kinds of waves, you know, that's really.
I, I think it's fair to say, and I think I can speak on behalf of most of us, if it's clear that you're willing to work with us, what, what we're worried about and what we want to, um, mitigate the risk, I guess, is that any other developer who isn't you, or is not working in the same capacity, is, I, you know, that we don't have problems.
I understand, I totally understand. I, I, I get it, but that's why I said we're, we're coming first, so, and I don't know of anybody that's coming yet or has a plan or even. They will be coming, but not yet. We'll be first, I think. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you. Have a good night. Okay.
Feel bad.
It's a Zoom, Zoom call next time. ISDN lying to Rick's house.
I'll, I'll come up with some alternative language that we can consider.
Yeah, sure.
My decision. Obviously.
Probably flying down, just working on something, so I understand that.
Okay. All right, um, so we talked about committee reports, a little segue there. Um, next is, uh, the May sixth, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes. Did everybody have an opportunity to take a look at those? Have any questions or concerns?
I have some corrections.
You have some corrections, okay.
First of all, circuit writer isn't Mr. Mancara, Mr. Mancara, it's Mr. Jay Mancara.
Oh, okay.
On circuit writer. Um, the first paragraph under business, um.
On page one?
Page one, yeah. Second sentence says, "He explained that a sidewalk will be constructed on the east side of Albuquerque Avenue, connecting to the gas station," and I just added, "on the west side." If that's okay. Gas station on the west side.
Is that the Albuquerque, or would that be, um, the? Three A.
The side of Albuquerque, connecting to the gas station.
I think, I mean, I think that's supposed to be three A.
Yeah.
Trans.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that would connect to the gas station.
Yeah, because it's already a sidewalk.
Oh, three A, yeah, three A.
Ah, good catch.
You're right. Then on page two, the one, two, third paragraph starts, "Construction is set to begin where the existing sidewalk currently ends on Albuquerque Avenue. The new sidewalk will match the existing concrete standard and continue southward, I think it continues northward."
Northward, yeah.
Okay, on page three, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eighth paragraph starts, "Conversation shifted to infrastructure improvements, including reconstruction of town roads, utility pole relocations, widening by two feet, and road resurfacing." I don't know what we were widening by two feet.
This was, uh, right, side of, um, the.
One oh two?
Rose Meadows. Yes, it's Cutler Road, yep. Yeah, on Derry Road.
Cutler Road's not getting widened by two feet, but one oh two is getting widened by.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, I don't know.
Clarifying, that might be a good idea.
Right, clarifying.
Clarify that. One oh two. Okay. And I think that was all I had.
Anybody have anything else?
I have a question.
I do. No, no, go ahead.
Okay, on page two, it's mentioned that the LCTV streaming stopped. Should we have a, a tape recorder going in the room as a backup, just in case the streaming fails and there's no recorded record?
He did, he did have one meeting where he couldn't, he didn't get the sound, I don't know if it was this meeting or because he asked me to clarify some things, probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
There, I heard from John that there is a, yeah, and they, they have to record it manually, right?
Yeah.
In addition to what's broadcasted, right?
But in, on the rare occasion where that fails, should we have just a tape recorder going here just to capture the conversation so the minutes can be accurate?
Like just completely separate from that system?
Yeah. Belt and suspenders, sanding the belt.
Well, Matt usually does the minutes, well, that would make sense if something happened on the television, then.
Right, where's? Couldn't, where's this information coming from?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think the question is, when do, when do you know that it's happening, right? Is it as a result of going back and looking at the tape and seeing a gap, or is it, if you realize it mid-stream, then we can correct.
Yeah, I think it happens, sometimes it stops live, so YouTube and TV, they can't see it. And John said, but often it still records, but then, and this one, I think it stopped recording altogether, so like, Russ would obviously know, he ran it for a while, maybe a DVR would be kinda nice to have, you know, a third redundant tool.
Yeah, something just separate from. Yeah, something just separate from, from the LCTV console, just a tape deck here, you hit the record button, and you've got that as your backup, the backup to the backup.
So it'd just be a matter of picking one out.
I have some small ones.
And teaching the kids how to change a tape?
I was gonna say.
It's all vintage. Yeah, you could, it's all vintage.
But how did we do it before LCTV started recording these? We had a tape deck on the table.
Yeah.
And we would all just have our meeting, the tape recorder would be recording everything.
Yep.
It wasn't until around twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen that LCTV picked up this meeting for broadcast.
Oh, you're talking about just audio, complete audio tape, oh, I got you, I thought you meant like a DVR.
The minutes don't need to show that I've gestured like this. It just needs to show that I've spoken.
Yeah. Should we clarify that the wells are for irrigation purposes?
Where are you?
On page three, uh, where the bolded, uh, talks about the wells.
That's a good idea.
It's, yeah, right below the sentence that you were mentioning earlier on that page. A key point was the successful drilling of two wells yielding a hundred twenty gallons per minute, and eighty-five gallons per minute, respectively, indicating ample water availability for the development. So that's not on this site that was being discussed, it's across the street in the industrial site. Um, and those, I'm sure would only be for irrigation purposes, because-
Just irrigation.
Yeah, so, that might confuse people without that context, so we might wanna say, um, for, for irrigation.
Usage, yeah.
I had something on page six. Paragraph four, first sentence, end of the sentence, I wanna remove the word "not." New facility from scratch and did undergo site review.
I remember that.
On what paragraph, please?
Four, first sentence.
Okay.
Just remove the word "not" in that sentence.
Ah, right.
And then a couple paragraphs below on that, um, five, six, seven, the other one where my name is mentioned, starting the paragraph. I guess I didn't understand, I kept really reading the sentence over and over again, and I don't know. Toward the, the end of that paragraph, it said, "Would include fifty percent of the fees other require, otherwise required." Do you mean fifty percent of the spaces?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was, Russ read that about six times and was like, what did I say? Okay, so, yeah, if you could say fifty percent of the spaces otherwise required, not fees, that would be helpful.
Anybody have anything else? If everybody's good, I'll entertain a motion to approve the binnetts as amended.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Letha, can I, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Russ, any further discussion? Just a point of clarification, uh, so, Jeremy, you weren't here, Jesse was, is an alternate, and I said he could vote, because you weren't here. Do you mind if he votes tonight, or?
He can vote abstained, it's, it's fine.
Okay, I just wanna, I mean, why, if you're, I just wanted to make sure that-
No problem at all.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so, um-
You were absent during this meeting, so the minutes, anyway.
All right, take a vote. All those in favor of approval of the May sixth, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes, um, as we've amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six zero one.
Okay, that'd be seven.
Seven.
I'm sorry, one, two, three.
Unless we just not include the non-voting member.
Or you just drop my vote altogether and have him be the vote for today. It's fine, too.
So it would just be seven zero.
Seven zero zero then, yeah.
With the note that-
We'll drop my-
You're right, it's seven zero one. So it's, um, seven zero zero. Okay, thank you. All right. Do we have any other business this evening? Jay, do you have anything?
I do not.
Uh, Joan?
No, I do not.
Does anybody have anything?
I have one thing, and I just wanted to bring it up, um, only because I did see it in the emails, and if I can find. So, here it is, uh, so there is a New Hampshire Municipal Association, uh, is doing a, um, well, they're doing a ZBA basics webinar on Wednesday, June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. It's a Zoom from noon to two. If you're interested in how the zoning board works, you can register for it, but I just wanted to throw it out there, something to, if you wanted to add it to your education.
Is that NHMA?
It's NHMA, yeah. And that's, I think that was it. Yeah. Okay, so I had to report. Um, I don't have anything else this evening, if nobody else has anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion by Jeremy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Russ, any discussion?
Travis.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Well, technically, you, you can't vote, because Jeremy did the motion, or?
No, he's still a voting member.
He's still a voting member.
But, but, but Jeremy made the motion, so would that affect it?
I, I, I shouldn't be voting on it.
You need to.
Yeah, you, well, that's right, you, you did, you made the motion. I mean, we could stay here all night. How about this, all those in favor of adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes seven zero zero. Have a good evening, everyone, and we will see you, um, in June. Good night.